So it's six o'clock on Thursday, January 2nd. Welcome to 2025. Happy New Year, everyone. The call meeting in order and set adjust agenda is the first thing we have.
Yes.
You do.
It's pretty minor. So item number four is a grant proposal for the municipal planning grant. I would like to just add in a second grant proposal there for the Flood Resiliency Communities Fund grant. I just added that to your staff. It's in the amount of $460,189.47. So we want to move on that fast because we're going to have the opportunity. And Kristen will explain what that's for. But I would like to just add that second grant application into item number four.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Motion to add, do we need to, what's the, it's just add on to that.
You did.
Motion to add item six or?
No, we're just amending item four.
Okay, I motion to amend item four to add a second grant for flood resiliency program.
Okay.
All in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
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 Aye. What's everybody so we have a new agenda or we have an adjustment. Communication with the audience. Anybody here want to communicate anything? Thank you for coming. Next, select board to approve minutes from last time, which was December 19th. That was our last regular meeting. I thought minutes looked good.
Can motion to approve the minutes as written for December 19th, 2024?
Second.
Any discussion on minutes? All in favor of approving them as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, town manager report, Mr. Upson.
Hello, welcome, everyone. So I have some updates. So we're kicking off some of the Merck work. We're submitting some of the required documents. We're going to meet internally this week or next week to talk about the next steps. But we're planning on starting up at the senior center with the heating project up there.
And Merp is municipal energy and resiliency program.
And then text my gov widget. If you all go to your town website, it's up on the website. So that's going to be, we're going to be rolling that project out in the next couple of weeks, but it's there. Getting ready to go live. If you have a town report, report due for the business manager, please get that submitted as soon as possible.
By when?
By the 26th of December, so.
It was due on 12/31.
So, okay, so.
The town report is due.
I'm looking at you.
Just a few days after the warning will get approved. And so that's not until the 16th. I only have Friday and Monday's holiday and it's due on Tuesday, 21st. So like in terms of layout and everything, like I've got to have people's stuff so I know. Because it has to be in third page increments and all this stuff. So yeah, it's, it's important that I have it and I know what I'm working with in order to.
Yeah.
Work with the layout.
Get on that stuff.
Sure.
That side of the table.
Sure, sure, it's already done.
Better Back Roads grant was submitted for $20,000 grant for a section of Ethel Road from where the pavement ends up to Scott Road. We're going to do some work on there next summer. Get the crown back, do some ditching.
Nice.
There's that. And then I sent you an email today for code of ethics training. So that law just went into effect yesterday. And you have the year to do the training. And we're going to be updating our policy, code of ethics policy that's in the works.
Great, thank you for phone stuff on that.
That's my report.
Wow, short and sweet.
Yep.
Beautiful. Questions for OP?
There's no update on that, whatever that number is for the Kip Joy Building. Main Street.
Was on several phone calls today regarding that. He did phone calls.
Moving forward.
So I am starting to rattle some cages pretty vigorously. One of his is running so angry.
Yeah.
It laughs. Wears on me.
Yeah. Okay.
No, there should be some updates soon. Right now I talked to the fire marshal. I talked to Evernorth today. So they're trying to get everybody on the same page, which has been a challenge. Because the promote housing partnership, the, the management of that property switched shortly after this incident happened. So it's just been some communication failures.
About the pedestrian bridge, I know you, you sent us a schedule of events for that. Is it true that the next real thing is bids are due on like the?
Twenty seconds.
Twenty second.
Yep.
That's the next.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
And we received three proposals for the slope stabilization project in East Hardwick.
Oh.
Yeah, so we gotta, so that'll be on the next agenda.
Okay.
We'll choose one, but we have one in mind.
Okay, great.
Do you assume the bid opening in the, we have a special meeting or something?
For the bridge?
Yeah.
Yes.
On the 22nd?
Uh.
Sometime after.
Maybe like a day or two after, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, I'm out of town before that, so.
It won't be before.
Okay. First.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions for OP? Next on our agenda, road foreman report. The road crew is busy plowing roads, I assume, because the roads are clear and it's still snowing. The next item is Harvard Police Department report given by Mike Henry. But Mike Henry is working a lot of shifts this weekend and so we're not requiring him to also hang out with us tonight. And moving on, item one, select board to set the location of the 2025 town meeting. Tanya, are you here perhaps to impart, to talk about that?
Oh, I'm just very pleased to see what you decide.
Oh, alright. Okay.
So she can prepare the warning.
So is this the year that we thought we could move to the townhouse?
It was the year that we thought we could move to the townhouse, but the construction is not complete. So I don't think we can, because the stage won't be accessible. And that is where our plan was to have voting up there accessible. So people could come and go and the meeting could happen in front of the curtain. So I think we have to do it again at the.
So the, so the layout.
Can we do it at the school still?
I'm sure, I know I can do it, but I will do that after tonight.
I would say we can.
Well, they said they.
We can't, we can't tax.
Well, they, but they were talking about how there were changes in the rules about, yeah, whatever, but yeah.
So, so when, when we can move to the townhouse, the layout will be floor discussion. Like the, the select board and town folks would sit down front on the floor?
Maybe, or up on the stage.
Floor and stage, in front of the curtain.
The curtain, the grand drake would be down.
Yeah.
And voting would be happening behind the grand drake.
Got it.
And then the accessible, the lift is there in case people need it to get to that level.
Okay.
Or people could enter.
Yep. Okay.
To that side and they wouldn't have to be voting in front of the meeting the way it used to be way back when.
But the ongoing construction is addressing accessibility, including to the stage. It's not going to be ready in time for town meeting, but it will be ready for town meeting 2026.
It will, because it will be done by summer, next summer.
Great.
Late spring or summer, yeah.
Okay. Well, I mean, things always take longer than they think.
Yeah, yeah. But the, then the balcony, you know, because we won't be able to use the balcony until the, until it's done as well. Because that's, that's the firing site.
Right, we're creating fire.
The addition.
With the addition.
The fire.
Yeah, got it. So for all those renews, we're looking at the school.
Okay, I will find much more for sure than that.
And that's. Yeah. The Harvard Elementary School.
And since we're discussing it, there's still plenty of time for people to do petitions.
When are they due?
Um, January 27th, 5:00 PM.
And I know at least on this board, we always have three positions that come up every year.
The two one years, one three year, three year town clerk treasurer. And then. Hazen has one three year and two one year, three years. So, we'll do petitions.
Okay. Great. Thanks for going through those. Do you need, do you, do you need a vote in the record for the location or you could?
Okay.
Okay. Great. Next, item two, select board to consider approving cannabis license renewal for Vintagerty Farms. Which is here. So, and it's a, we don't have any.
We have anything.
Complaints or anything?
No complaints.
There was a question, it was resolved between the former and the new.
Okay.
Who in the left?
There was a question that was resolved.
There was a concern that was brought to me by the neighbor and they talked to each other and they figured to resolve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the cannabis license renewal for Vintagerty Farms.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
There's no second.
Oh, sorry.
Second?
Thank you.
Come on, Eric.
I know, slipping.
Jeez.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Gary's. Next, item three, select board to consider entering into a memorandum of understanding with East Hardwick Neighborhood Organization for the in-kind work needed for a grant match for improvements to the LDRT trailhead in East Hardwick. Thanks, Tanya. So we had in our packet, we had a description of this. Thinking, we heard about it last time at our last meeting. And where am I on the wrong thing? So there's an MOU. So, so and we have, we have a whole lot of people on the Zooms about, that were probably interested in this. From East Hardwick, Cheryl is back. So the, when I look through this, I guess the things that caught my eye are they're looking for, looking to the town to do some work, some physical work at the site, at the, it looks like at the early part of the construction. Looking to the town to do construction oversight, I think, was listed as also an in-kind amount. And then further in the MOU was some maintenance items like trash removal and repairs to the surface as necessary. So. With that, do, has it, I'm just wondering in terms of like grubbing the site and all that and fucking, you know, the in-kind work for the grant construction. Is that something that's, that's reasonable to ask the town to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a reasonable ask.
Alright, so the, something that we have the equipment and they can do that reasonably. Okay.
And it's, is it town property or LDRT or the rail trail? Rail trail.
It's railroad property.
That we rent or whatever.
We lease it.
Right.
Somewhere to, somewhere to this here.
Yeah, yeah. So we would take care of it.
We lease it.
Yeah.
In anticipation of this project.
Yeah.
Who would be overseeing the construction management services? That's the question.
They would.
No.
No, they would.
Construction management services.
Maybe some project manager.
Construction management project administration and then the construction management services would be on the second page. Municipality will provide the all in-kind services.
Maybe since we have some of the members of EDO here.
Yeah.
Cheryl or whoever from EDO, could you just describe the construction management services a little bit?
Sure, Irene just joined us and so she's really a better person to do that.
I'm sorry, are we up already?
Oh, yeah, there you go. You're, you're, you're up already.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed, I missed what the, was our question?
Irene, we were just, we were just discussing, Eric Chris is recapping the asks from the MOU that you sent. And we're just, there were some questions about for the town, construction management services, like what that meant.
Just overseeing the work that will be done by the contractor that's hired or contracted with, by ENO. Also, I, I thought it would make sense for the town to look over the, the bids that come in when we, after we send out the request for, for proposals for that work.
We could.
And I, I know that they'll, at the very least, we'll be required to get three competitive bids. I, I don't know what the process is in, in terms of advertising it. But we'll find out more once we know whether or not we've gotten the grant.
Who would be administering the contract with the construction company?
EDO would be.
Okay.
So the, in the grant application, there's a, I think like a 5% administrative costs line. That, that's money to ENO?
The administration, so I, I don't have the grant application in front of me, but we did have to account for the cost of administering the grant. And that's something that many of us on ENO have experienced with. I've done that quite a bit in my role when I worked at NVDA. So that seemed to make sense that that would be an in-kind task that we can do in order to meet the required match.
Okay.
I, I do have it in front of me and the fee is based on 5% of the total project cost. And it's, the matching amount would be worth $3,004,005.
Yeah, so that's not base, and I don't know whether they'll require, they probably will. They'll probably require that who's ever working on that prepare a timesheet so that we can show that we spent so many hours and the volunteer rate, I think, is $35 an hour or something like that, so.
Yeah.
But that's the estimate of what, what that would come to.
Yeah, that makes sense. Are you, you're okay with it?
I don't see any issues with it.
Okay.
You didn't, you didn't the trash?
The trash has been a hot button issue.
Well, the trash is the trash. I mean, we have a trailhead here that then trash has to be dealt with.
Right. And you're going to figure it out right there.
Figure that.
And that is after, like, everything's done, we're supposed to pick up the trash in a second. Not talking about like during construction, if you can all their.
No.
No, 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 just.
So do you have any issue with the grubbing and clearing of the site that I indicated the town would do?
No.
Okay, good.
I think the big question, Irene, is that this is but a question not just for this project, but for all of the trailheads and then also just in general for trash and recycling responsibilities for town. Currently, the road crew does that for Main Street. But it's, it's kind of a big job as, as all these trails expand. So we've had conversations with the select board as to whose responsibility that is. So at least for me, everything looks good except for that one, the regular basis trash and recycling. That, that could potentially be a really big job because I think the trailheads could be really utilized, which is great. But regular basis could mean every other day, could mean once a week, like it's, that's the only.
Yeah.
The only sticking point for me is, is not knowing who is responsible for that and that being potentially a big.
Well, I mean, my thought, my thought all along has been, why are we providing trash and recycling receptacles for people? Why can't they just carry them what they carry?
Pack in, pack out.
So when you provide a trash recycling receptacle, you're inviting people to dump their stuff there.
I agree.
Except that we have trash and recycling receptacles that we applied for grant to.
Correct.
Right, and so the cost of those was what, $3,500 for just the receptacles themselves?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's something to think about.
Because they're like national park grade, they're not just cans.
And there's always going to be some bad actors who don't pack in, pack out. That will just say, well, I'm taking a rest here and I forgot that water bottle and I don't care.
So it's, it's an added cost, so. But if it's, you know, if it's, it's something we provide, then we'll take care of it. But if we don't provide, then we don't have to take care of it.
If, if I could just jump in, I think it's much like to think about it like just on Main Street. You have trash receptacles in the town with this many people coming in. It pretty much comes down to choice. If you don't have a trash girl, you're going to have litter. And that, that's the reason municipalities have trash girls and have this service is to try to keep it out of the ditches and the roads and people's yards. So I don't, I'm not certain how we're going to do it. The numbers they're talking about, if there is, if there is no way to add trash recycling, then trash is going to be dumped all on the trail, over at the trailheads.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't, I don't agree, but because I think it's a different use case. So I think people on Main Street are shopping on Main Street. They're maybe getting takeout on Main Street. They're maybe getting coffee and they're walking around with stuff they've acquired that they need to dump when they're done with it. And I think people who are riding their bikes or their snowmobiles or their horses are passing through and they're not acquiring anything at this rest stop that they didn't have before they got there. So I don't know, I guess I just.
Either way, the grant that we wrote and we rewarded the money to purchase the receptacles for trash and recycling in that grant, we said.
Yeah.
That we were going to empty them. So.
Okay.
We got the grant based on saying that we were going to maintain them.
Did we get receptacles for that trailhead in East Hardwick too? Or just this one?
Just this one.
Just this one.
Okay, I was just wondering if.
Whatever, I mean.
So however we solve this one, it came, the other trailhead can be treated the same way. I mean.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we?
The one in town is a little more accessible than you would think.
Did we have that out all summer? Did we have that out over here?
No, no, they're still in the, no, they're not out.
Well, this, well, I think this is an ongoing conversation too. So, you know, obviously we're not going anywhere, EDO is not going anywhere. So if it suddenly becomes a problem that the municipality can't handle or there's more trash being dumped there, like the purpose.
We may need to take them away.
We may need to take them away, but I think that we don't need to figure that out tonight. We just bring it up because it's a conversation that we've had a lot. Because it does add up to be a lot of work. So I just think it's important to name that. And then if we, if they get the grant and the trailhead, trailhead is built, which it probably will be, then we can figure out the details of that then, right?
Alright.
So then.
No, but this. So that's a, that's one of the, the line items, so to say, in the MOU regarding the LDRT trailhead. So do you want to strike that from the MOU for now? I think, I believe that is in there again, I don't have.
It is, it is.
Yeah. Because it wasn't, there was nothing in the grant application about trash, trash receptacles. I think that was, I, I actually was under the impression that the town had already acquired a trash receptacle for the East Hardwick trailhead, so that's not correct.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't know the answer to that question. I know we have them, I know they're in cold storage. I don't know if we have two sets or just one set for the trailhead down here.
Okay.
I can find out.
Well, I, I think that I need some sort of an MOU for this final grant application to show that ENO has the permission of the town to undertake all these improvements on the land that is leased by the town. So if that's holding up the town signing the MOU, I would suggest that it be removed for now.
Just FYI, I've been informed you have three trash receptacles, one for each trailhead and an extra one.
Oh, good.
Will be placed.
Perfect. Thanks for the clarification.
So do you just want a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding with the East Hardwick?
Well, we need to fill in the dollar amounts.
I think, I think on the revised version that I sent, where I sent two separate MOUs, I thought I had put in dollar amounts.
That's where I got, that's where I got that one, the single email with the MOU, let me check.
Thank you.
Because the night of the last select board meeting, I revised it and separated it into two separate MOUs. One for the school street parcel and one for the LDRT trailhead. And I think at that point, I figured I'm just going to put an estimated number so that there's no blind spaces.
So the version that we're looking at, Irene doesn't have those numbers, but OP is checking.
Okay, let me, it's possible that I didn't do that.
No, I don't have, either, either of the emails that you sent don't have a dollar amount, but we can pencil them, we can write them in.
Well, plus this says draft on it anyway, so they, they can just authorize you to sign it maybe.
Yeah, exactly. We can just authorize OP to sign the, the agreement when the, with, when the dollar amounts are provided. And do we want to strike the line about the trash pickup or no?
I don't think we can.
We don't think we can. I think we'd leave it and I think we just, we're, we're going to need to agree verbally that if that becomes a major problem, like if it becomes a site where people are dumping their household trash and those, then we'll have to revisit it.
Well, I just have an internal, more of an internal question of the construction management services. That would, that would be managed by our potential public works director. It's like, who would be the point person for that? Would that be?
I don't think we have to.
It could be.
Say a point person right now, it's just that we'll take care of the construction management and make sure that it's.
But if you're worrying.
The work is being carried out.
But if you're worrying about bandwidth generally for project management or this project, there's no way they're going to know about the grant before July 1st.
Okay, fair enough.
And the way these RTB grant awards have been going the last few years, they've been pretty late in the year. Maybe they're getting, maybe, maybe Forrest Carson rec, getting their act together on it, but.
This isn't a huge lift. There, EDO is.
It's a small.
ENO is taking a huge piece of the pie here. And I think that in the MOU, the, the few asks that they have by the town, I think we can come through for them.
Okay. Yeah, and, and it's not a huge construction project. It's basically creating a flat spot, right?
Yeah, and a pavilion.
And a pavilion that sounds like is likely to be ordered as a.
Yeah.
Pre-built thing or kit or something.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Were you making a motion, Jay? You started it.
You can do it if you want.
Irene, can you, can you give a not to exceed number for those three blank spots on the MOU?
Well, we're just going to authorize them to sign when you get the.
Okay.
Well, I know that the grant will not exceed $50,000 because that is their maximum grant.
Okay.
And I believe that when I put together the budget, we ended up, you know, was going to be paying 30% of the total project cost within kind and cash reserves. So. Whatever that is backwards.
I thought.
It was over $70,000. And I, I can get those, I, I will open up all my files and get you those approximate numbers, OP.
Yeah.
But that, that'll be the, and, and we're still, you know, we're in the process of preparing the final grant application. So there might be slight modifications to the numbers in the budget.
Okay.
But definitely the grant will not exceed $50,000.
So could we have a motion to authorize a town manager to sign an MOU between the town and the East Hardwick Neighborhood Organization for the LDRT? So could we have a motion to authorize the town manager to sign an MOU between the town and the East Hardwick neighborhood organization for the L B R T trailhead in East Hardwick pending uh, the constructor, or the grant, I guess, numbers?
So moved.
Second.
More discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, any votes, motion carries. Thank you guys for, for taking the lead on this and uh, um, I hope you, that you're successful. I, I do need to have just one question for you, are you applying for non-motorized or mixed use or motorized money?
We are, um, I think it's mixed use, because the trail is used by snowmobiles in the winter, so
Great.
I believe that it fall in that category.
Great, I was just curious, I think that'd be awesome.
Yeah, we, we had to check off, um, in the grant application, the different kinds of uses for, and, and, you know, we checked all of them that are allowed on the rail trail.
Right, implosion, blocking, I think, yeah.
Awesome. Awesome, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I just one quick question, so the MOU pertaining to School Street?
I'll, I'll.
Which has nothing to do with the grant.
Yeah.
Did you, did you get that?
I did, and I, we have um, three proposals for some engineering. We have uh, one point four million in FEMA dollars allocated for that slope stabilization project. I don't know what, we're about to go out with the engineering for that, and it's a fairly involved project, so I don't know what the limits of disturbance will be, the area of disturbance will be for that slope stabilization project, so I don't wanna commit to anything right now.
Okay.
Um, we, we don't know the status of that area and what it's gonna, what the repairs are gonna entail. I mean, that, that whole bank could be cut back quite a bit anyways and, and armored, I just don't know.
Okay.
So if we could ta, if we could table that other MOU, that'd be great.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, thanks, so uh, I'm gonna move us along. Next item is item four, select board to consider.
I'm sorry, buddy.
Select board to consider approving a municipal planning grant application for flood resiliency planning in the Granite Street Historic District and Atkins Field. And also in this item, we're gonna discuss um, a flood resilient communities grant for approximately four hundred thousand.
Can you, I just need to make an announcement, uh, Mr. Mr. Appolito? We, we passed your, we passed by your agenda item and it's been approved, so you're all set. Yeah, have a good night, stay warm.
So um, so municipal planning grant for flood resiliency planning in the Granite Street Historic District. Kristin, I assume this is why you're here to talk. Okay.
Okay, um, it's basically looking at the uh, Granite Street Historic District, which would also encompasses um, Hardwick, Bullpit Street. It's in the downtown, designated downtown, with the um, Atkins Field, Atkins Field is part of it. Um, looking at what kind of floodplain mitigation or floodplain restoration we can do there to help with the flooding. And what you guys got was a list of the five different areas in town that we've been working with. And just to let you, just let you see that, um, this is actually the area that has not had anything done yet. We thought that I put in early for what's called a brick grant through FEMA. Nothing's happening with those right now, they, it looks like they've had a pause put to them, I don't know why, I don't know if it's changing, government's federal funds. Um, this is state funding, it's thirty-three thousand. The nice part about this is that, one of the things that typically would have to happen, would you, you'd be doing a plus modeling for Cooper and for um, the L Moil. Their E D A grant that was received that is already doing the flood modeling. Um, and the company, the engineering firm that is doing that, has the capacity and would be interested in bidding on this particular project if we get the, so they've already, and even if they don't, they're doing that work, so we're not gonna have to contract out to do uh flood modeling. So we'll have the information to see how things can, if, you know, if this happens, will, how much will this reduce flood and body? The theoreticals will be able to do part of this.
So the, so the municipal, the, the project that the municipal planning grant would be funding.
Is a flood resiliency for that area.
Okay, and looking at ways to create flood resiliency
Yep.
for that neighborhood.
Yep, reconnecting floodplain, flood mitigation, I mean, it would be wide open, you don't have.
Yep, so they would make recommendations.
They'd be making recommendations, hopefully, um, because we've already, usually the big item, ticket item is the flood modeling. But because that's been done already, we should be able to have deliverables of benefit cost analysis and preliminary engineering for two to three projects. So that would mean that we'd be ready to go for hazard mitigation grants.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
And you, and from us, you need?
Um, I, we need, there's a three thousand dollar match.
Match.
Casey has got that, that to come out of, or that to not.
I think I said the accrued interest in the general fund, cause we've been using that for grant matches.
And we also have, didn't we, didn't we have seventy-five thousand to be used for?
That's seventy-five thousand.
We weren't talking about that one right now, that amount of money right now.
The budget act adjustment, you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I mean, you can, but.
Anyway, there's, so there would be money available, there's match funds available.
There's dash funds.
Yeah.
And, sounds like a good use of money, to me.
Agreed.
So, um, alright, so that's that one, do we need a, do, do we need a motion to, to pursue that?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I just, actually, I'm gonna need a municipal, um, I forgot to bring the, uh, we've got time, but I'll have to have some, I'll have to have to sign a municipal uh grant, there's a municipal, yeah, there's a, there's a particular like motion you have to make.
The application?
A resume.
There's a form.
There's a motion form.
Oh, okay, and it's okay to do it next time.
There's a form.
Yeah, if you just do the, if you do a motion, that's great.
To, to approve.
So make the motion to approve the municipal planning grant application for flood resiliency planning in the Granite Street Historic District in Atkins Field.
Second.
Excellent, more discussion on that one? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, any votes, motion carries, so great, thank you for bringing that, and then the?
Um, the other one came up today, there's a pot, we had two of the individuals who are in, have done the paperwork for the buyout um, request do not match the FEMA guidelines, they match what's called the flood resilient community fund guidelines. That was the fund that was utilized to purchase the In By The River and the other three properties last year. Those are properties that are not technically in the floodplain. These two properties are not in the floodplain, they are, the backside is on the L Moil and is coming, eroding, every time we have a, moving into a large rain event, it's eroding. They used to have seventy-five feet, they're now twenty-five feet. Um, and at the same time, for large amounts of water coming, stormwater coming off the hillside and through their houses. So they're getting water in two angles. Um, the fund is anticipating money returning in January, they called me and they appreciated how we did the work the first time and asked me to expedite getting through, getting it through. It is, as Casey said, a four hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine, forty-seven, because it covers the cost of the buildings and the demolition. It would be done in-house, but we've, I've already done that for the other four, I can do it again. So I'm looking for, for um, support on that grant as well, I have a grant proposal with Casey.
And that one, that one
There's no match.
That's no match, and we contract out all the work.
Yes, yeah, I just have, end up being the, the public manager on it.
Right.
And kind of perform, I'm a, a part of it.
Yep. And uh, alright, these are, and these are properties that had already implied.
They've already had, they did their paperwork back in September, and left it with um, E D A, with the hopes that they get money back. And that fund.
I can motion to approve applying for the grant for the flood resiliency program. Do you need that motion or?
Um, no, with the flood resilient community fund.
Flood resiliency communities fund.
Seconded.
Okay, um, and, so just to have this discussion in our meeting, the, um, whenever we do a buyout, there's an impact to the grant list, however, there are.
The flooding impacted the grant list, not the buyout.
The?
Right, we look.
The flooding impacted the grant list.
Okay.
The flooding has impacted the valuation of each of those properties.
Okay.
So really the flooding impacted your grant list, you're just adjusting
Okay.
with what happened with the flooding.
I had the same thought, but then like, the alternative is force these people to stay in there and not be able to afford their
And be flooded out.
Be flooded all the time in those.
Those, those locations are also
Yeah.
right on the riverbank that puts line.
So they're hazardous locations essentially, or ability.
Right.
Yes, yes.
They're showing some.
And the, the comment made by one of the individuals was, they thought about putting it on the market or selling it to a friend, and they said, I can't do that to somebody. Every time it rains, I'm worried that my house is gonna fall into the river. You know, so really, when you got, you guys opened it up, we did about twenty, I gave you the acquisition numerous last time, these are two on that twenty, these aren't new.
Right.
But really, the flooding impacted the grant list. Those properties are not worth the valuation that, when they have to disclose what happens to them.
Yeah.
They're no longer worth the amount that they're assessed for.
They were. Right, okay, great.
So we stopped it back.
So we have a, yeah, we have a motion and a second, do we have more discussion?
Sherry, wait a second?
I was.
Tim.
Um, do more discussion? So, uh, all in favor of approving, uh, pursuing the flood resilient communities um, fund
Fund.
fund.
money for these two buyouts, and it's four hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and eighty-four? Please say aye.
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 Aye, any votes, so motion carries, thank you very much for doing all that work.
Great, and if you can make sure that we get those worked in time.
Worked in.
Coming around.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, um, oh, and, and thank you for the, the um, update.
That's all on the grant, on the website now.
Oh, it is, nice.
My industry did my, my pages.
Great. The town's zoning pages.
Town's zoning pages, yeah.
Yep, great.
And flood, it's flood, the flooding sources, I think there, I've been adding a lot of different pieces of information, so it should be more usable. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kristin.
Nice, nice.
Nice to see you.
Ooh, did you want one?
No, I'll have some here. Uh, next, item five, select board to go through FY twenty-six draft budget, make changes as desired, then consider approving the final draft for presentation to voters at town meeting, so
Okay.
tell us what's changed.
Um, so the one change um
Cool work, ten point.
is in revenue. Um, so right now we're at nine point nine three, I've updated like all the insurances now that I have the twenty-five premiums and such. But the seventy-five thousand dollars that we received, the budget act adjustment, I was talking with our auditor about that, and the state of Ramon considers that we received that in fiscal year twenty-four, so we have that money.
So it doesn't go in this budget?
It's not gonna, we can't put it in here, at this point, all you're doing is deciding to spend it, it's sitting in unearned, meaning unspent.
But it's not, but we can't put it in, yes.
So we can't put it in here, because we really already have it and it's gonna be considered fiscal year twenty-four, even though we didn't receive it till August.
Got it. Yeah.
Cause you have sixty days after the year ends to book stuff into the, into the previous year. And the state has like a website where you go on and they list what they gave out, and so they consider that we received that money last fiscal year. So we do need to decide how to spend it, but we can't inject it into this budget as revenue.
Alright.
So, so that you'll see that that's not there anymore.
Okay.
And other than that, um, I really don't have any, any changes since last time, other than little things that I've updated. So right now, we're at just under four hundred thousand, nine point nine three, and that's with an additional police officer, a director of public works and all the normal things, I mean, obviously those are the true driving factors to the positions.
And then regular costing, we've seen.
Correct, um, you know, health insurance.
Big cost, business, health insurance.
Fifteen percentage, yeah, um.
Right. But we can't, we're doing that.
And then, you know, regular increases, contract increases and, yeah, so.
What is the, I have a question about, if you were to take out the police officer and the project manager, or the director of public works, what's that total?
Yeah, what's that?
It's over two hundred thousand, it's probably, it's like literally, you're, that would be like probably two hundred thousand dollar increase instead of four hundred thousand dollar increase. Because of salary and benefits, you're looking at, it's a hundred grand per position.
Right. So I think that's a question that we're gonna have to answer, for sure.
So what I'll do is I'll make sure to prepare um, exactly the cost, the, the total salary and benefits for each of those positions, so that we have that available.
Other, otherwise roughly three percent increase on the budget?
No, you still have a two hundred thousand, so it'd be a five percent.
Five percent increase, yeah.
Um, I'm just gonna, whoops, that's not bad.
Um, this kind of ties into the questions you were just asking, Kristin, about the buyout impact, the flood impact on the grant list, but this is assuming the proposed grant list property taxes is current last year. Last time being impacted by the buyouts of this past, does that include the buyouts?
Are, yeah, not just that, but the reappraisal will be effective.
Yeah, reappraisal.
So that's gonna be
So the reappraisal is gonna break up.
It's gonna bring it up.
Even the buyouts will break, will probably not, you, it'll raise up more than
So the state, the state thinks
Considerably more.
Right, yeah.
But it'll go down, yeah.
The state thinks we're currently at sixty percent C L A.
Yeah.
So you're talking about going, increasing from?
It'll go up like forty percent, because they, they usually try to get you over a hundred percent, so you have some time to work your way down, back down to eighty.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
So, yes.
Those buyouts total like sixteen thousand.
So those buyouts. Right, they're
It's not there in the grant list.
You're not even, with the reappraisal happening, you're not, even without the reappraisal.
Less than, less than twenty-five.
Doesn't touch it.
You wouldn't feel it.
Right.
But that's not, but that's not gonna be reflected, that'll be reflected in next year's budget.
No, it's not really.
The appraisal, the appraisal.
The grant list.
No, it's gonna be July one of twenty-five, our reappraisal will be done.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, we're gonna see that, um, I did a little, um
So we'll see what the actuals will be a lot higher for next time.
I mean, yeah, I added just some money in there and
The tax.
The, this is supposed to kind of be completed in July.
Right, so.
So the tax bills that go out in August.
Will be reflected by that. On July.
Yep. But this thing about, oh, well, not this thing, the um
The other page.
The other page, the other page just shows the effect on a, on a, like, that's
Yeah.
This is, that's all essentially fiction at this point, because we don't know what the, we don't know what the grant list is.
Yeah, it is. Right. I, yeah.
So our grant, like, that's
That's an estimated, that's what I put in there.
Is that, is that with, with a forty percent increase?
No.
No, so we're really, our estimate is probably gonna be something closer to three hundred million.
I, I only added twenty million, I only added twenty million to it.
Yeah, so it's gonna go up.
It's gonna be, it's, so this is probably gonna be a negative number, but I didn't wanna get too carried away here, so, um, I just added twenty million to the current.
It's gonna be another
The reason, the, just the reason I bring it up is it's an awkward, we haven't had a reappraisal in a long time, and so
That's ten years.
There's roughly ten, yeah, every
It's been ten, it's every ten years.
Sixteen, two thousand sixteen.
But the housing market's changed a lot since that, the value of housing has changed a lot, since, the only reason I bring it up is that, we have to publish, we have to go to this and publish this for January
Yes.
and that number's gonna be very different, that, it's not, there's no, we have no control over it.
It always is, yeah.
But in, but in March and July, it's gonna be really different, so I think it's just something that we're all gonna have to deal with, I think it's just gonna be a little bit.
So the thing to keep in mind, I think, though, is that
People are gonna be happier.
What we're voting on
Yeah.
when we ask the town to approve, is the total budget, that four million, four hundred thousand, seven, four hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred fifty-two, that's what we're gonna ask people to approve for, for, they can amend from the floor.
Yeah.
The whole downstream implications of how that ends up in a tax bill is not something that's voted on.
Right.
So
But it's still what people focus on, because they, they still focus on how, that our budget is going to affect their taxes.
Yep, and so
I, I'm just
Yep, and it does become complicated because, because of the reappraisal and because some people are more underappraised Yep, and it does become complicated because, because of the reappraisal and because some people are more underappraised than others. And everything should get, um, kind of equalized and should be much more fair and equitable after the reappraisal, um.
Which is why we do it.
Which is why we do it. Uh, but that does mean that it, some people are gonna change. But the only thing that really matters for how much you change is, or sorry, for how much you pay in taxes, is how you change relative to other people in town. So if on average, everybody went up forty percent and you went up forty percent, then you're gonna end up paying the same thing that we estimate for this whole grand list. Even though your property got like. So, yeah.
I need to clarify one.
Sorry.
I mean, I mean this seriously.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just like.
It's always.
You seem sarcastic.
No, that's what I.
But I, I meant, I meant that one. Okay.
You were genuine that time.
I was genuine that time.
The fact that the grand list never comes out until May and we've already done all this stuff, it's just always just a bummer. Uh, it's just the way it is, but I.
Cause people do wanna know how is this gonna affect our taxes. And we say.
They wanna know. They wanna know. And you can't.
Roughly.
Well, you also see something like almost ten percent and you're like.
Whoa.
Is it a high, it's, this is one of the, at least since I've been on the board, this is the highest.
Oh, me too. This is the highest thing we've ever considered.
That we're.
Yeah, it was about eight last year, it was about eight last year, so.
It's a big deal, but it's also like, yes, I think it's important to.
Relative to everything. So we just have to be able to explain that. That's the big thing.
I think the important thing is.
People don't generally understand it.
Yeah, I think, I think what we're asking the town, I, and I think Obie's point is a good one, like what did it look, what would it look like without the two positions that we're adding? And that's a good, that's something we need to be able to answer. And it would be approximately a five percent increase without the two positions that we're looking at. And that, the reason that we're looking to add two positions, we're looking to add the police officer position because right now our PD is stretched so thin as to be ultimately unsustainable. So if we wanna continue with the level of service that we've become accustomed to, this is what we feel needs, we need to add one position there. For the, um, more administrative position in the town manager's office, this is, I think, in some regards, a response to two years in a row of flooding, seeing that there's a lot of excess work put on the town staff. And a lot of that's project management based. And that, how can we add staff to help? And the way that we've come to is this position, public works, that will take a fair amount of work into a new position and.
From what I can tell, looking around at the infrastructure here, that director of public work position should have been created when the village and town merged. So this is like forty years.
Long overdue. Long overdue. Thirty-five.
Cause your road commissioner, road foreman should be focused on the roads per our town charter. Not doing sewer and water project. We, so anyways.
Yeah.
Yes.
My rant.
So thirty-five years, now we're getting it done.
Yeah, so I think it's necessary for the growth that we need to, for the, the work that we need to catch up with.
Yeah. Right. I think it, it was brought to a head by all this.
The flood stuff.
The flooding.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of which impacted our, our wastewater infrastructure. And, yeah. Anyway, so that's our, we have to see if the voters agree, but this is what I think we think after going through it many times is, would be the best thing for the town.
Yep.
Here's me a quick comment. I really appreciate the numbers that have been added to the payroll because I think that makes it less of like a, just adding six or the six.
The number of the shins.
The number of positions because I think you could easily look at five hundred thousand dollars and be like, whoa, but actually it's a lot of people.
Right.
So, um, I think that's a nice add-on to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did it in all, like police highway, I did that in all of those so that it would be clear.
Okay. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's really helpful. I was gonna say some other towns' budget where they actually had listed everyone's names, positions and salaries.
Which you can essentially, but I'd have to change the format. It's just that the way they.
I know.
Each, it's public information. If people wanna know, they, they can inquire. I mean, it's, there's no hiding it. I mean, if somebody wants to know.
No, we don't wanna hide it.
Right, they can call and ask if they wanna know how much somebody makes and, yeah.
Yeah.
But, um.
I personally feel like it helps, like having a number of people is super helpful. But I think keeping all names out helps people focus on, we're just looking at the numbers when we're trying to decide if we're approving this budget.
Right.
And I think it just helps focus the, the attention as you look at the budget.
Your distractions.
Yeah.
So.
Casey, have you, I mean, other than that seventy-five thousand revenue that actually was last year and is not revenue for this year? Other changes since we looked at this last?
No. Other than, like I said, insurances, unemployment, workers' comp, building insurance, like those, cause I got the twenty-five premiums, those have been tweaked. But nothing like stand out, like crazy, like maybe a few thousand dollars even, like overall, so.
So you have, so you actually got, you have hard numbers for those?
Right, so I at least know what the first half of the fiscal year is for sure. And then you can assume a little bit of an increase. So yes, those are covered in.
Cause they're much, they're, they've firmed up basically.
Yeah.
And, and so this budget then has everything we talked about it, about minus that seventy-five thousand in revenue that was really for the previous fiscal year and you firmed up, um, the.
Insurances.
Workers' comp and, yep.
Yes, correct.
Um, I do just have, I really hate to ask, I just have one really good question with the library budget.
Yeah.
Um, and I do, and this is again, like to that point, Casey, I've seen the full-time, one full-time, two part-time. It might be, I think, uh, it might be worth putting in, just to go back to the six number that you put in, if we could fit in like six full-time or five full-time, like Tracy's part-time, but then, like in the library, it says one full-time, two part-time. But then in, and then in office, it's just six. I know there's not space, but maybe there's like an asterisk or something we could put in. Or we could just, whatever, I'll leave it to you.
I would have to make it like smaller, like, I, it would look a little awkward because it wouldn't be the same size, but it would be five F T slash one P T, like something like that.
Sure.
Something, whatever.
Oh, look, and it just barely fits.
It does. But I mean, it'll look a little funky in the town part. Somebody, when they proof it, they're gonna be like, the font is taller there, but that's really.
It's okay.
I just think if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that, we should just do it the same way.
Shouldn't the town clerk's office be two?
Uh, did I miss that? Yeah, you're right.
Two F T.
Yeah. Okay, and then, uh, six F T. I think I got, yeah, six including chief and then.
And then part-time's listed separately, yep.
Yeah, okay.
So that's what the question of the library is. So we have an increase in the, I don't know the details of it, but there's an increase in the health insurance and there's an increase in the retirement.
Wouldn't that be two?
Under the retirement, it says two. I'm just wondering about that.
Because the, when we increase Kevin's hours, he'll be eligible for retirement, but not health insurance.
Yeah.
So there'll now be two people on retirement, but still only one on health insurance.
Okay, so he's. Okay, thank you.
But that's not a full-time position. So there's still two part-time positions.
Yeah.
Right, but I have right here one full-time and two part-time. It's just that two are eligible for retirement.
Right.
That's, I mean, I could leave that off, but it's a little like odd.
No, leave it. That was good.
No, it's good.
Like, why is, like, why is one person's retirement going up sixty-six percent? That's why I put two, so.
No, no, it makes sense now. Thank you.
Yeah. Um.
So, um.
What else?
On the solid waste rep, you know, I think a few years ago, we cut that in half because I was doing it and I didn't feel like I needed to have three hundred dollars for doing that position.
Or like front, front line.
I don't know if it would help to attract someone to it. Maybe it doesn't matter. But I plan to resign from that, um, and we'll have to appoint someone and you know, I mean, some of that used to be to cover, um, travel. And the meetings are now large, almost ninety-nine percent are on Zoom. So maybe it doesn't matter, but I just thought I would bring it up before we're, before we sign and seal this thing. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, whether you've sent out an email, trying to.
There's a hundred, a hundred and fifty isn't much compensation for.
No, for one meeting a month, um, but, you know.
So. The one thing that we, I don't wanna get into this, but the cost of picking up all the trash, where is that? Like all this trash we have to pay to get removed at the trailheads? And if we're gonna have somebody start picking up Main Street too, where is that? Where are we gonna put that in? Cause that's a regular operating expense.
So we had, so we had talked about adding it to the recreation budget.
It's not capital. It's not a capital expense. It's a regular maintenance line, but where, where should it be?
Downtown maintenance.
Others use as assigned for the back of the board. I mean, if that budget, if the actuals on that budget had been consistently low, that's to me the only place that it makes sense to pull from, even if it's not that position.
Of downtown maintenance.
Downtown maintenance is what Sheri just suggested.
I mean, can't we just add a line that says trash, trash removal?
Yeah, but she's saying where do you want it? That's what she's asking us, like what budget?
Right.
And that is going up because of trash to three hundred?
Well, to match the actual, so.
That's because, no, the thirty, it's because of the portable toilet at the depot. That's two hundred and fifty dollars a month. That's biggest increase.
And that's because of the trailhead.
There's gonna be a portable toilet.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a portable toilet at the trailhead in East Hardwick too.
Is there?
Right, so I'm gonna, we've got.
But that's not, but that wasn't.
It's only for like six months a year, so it's about fifteen hundred dollars each. So you've got three thousand dollars with two portable toilets and then if we're gonna pay.
Seven to two.
One for East Hardwick trailhead. We'll have one too, I'm assuming, or that's what she just said. I don't know, I don't know, like, so.
It didn't come up in our.
No.
I think we should put it in, I think it's a, um, where's Hardwick?
Yeah.
Do you want to put this?
Well, it's inevitable, but we don't have to put it anywhere. You know, it'll come up at some point.
I'd say let's not put it in. We don't even know if they're getting the grant.
Right, okay, um, but.
It's still a trailhead though.
The, the trash or the existing, yeah.
Yeah, but. For the L V R T, it's a trailhead.
We're gonna add money for that.
But there's nothing there. If there's nothing there.
Nobody has to go to the bathroom if there's nothing.
Somebody pick the trash up down here instead of having our crew do it.
There are no businesses to go into. I mean, I don't ride the trail.
I've ridden the trail a fair amount and I have not yet had any problems.
Had, needed to stop, okay.
There's plenty of woods around the trail.
There, there.
That's my one thought about this.
Need a tree.
Sounds perfect.
I mean, it's Ramon, it's like.
Nice to hear you. Um, but in all seriousness, for this land, what are we doing?
Oh, they don't only ride, I mean, next, but, um, so we find what?
So this is the item that we're talking about, trash and what else is happening in the town?
Porter bodies.
And porta potties. And the porta potties, we're talking about.
I think they should go into the recreation budget.
Can you show us rec?
So right now it's thirty-five hundred proposed for downtown maintenance? Well, certainly East Hardwick shouldn't be in downtown maintenance, right? That could be a rec.
Nope, nope, nope. Rec and trails.
As long as it's somewhere.
There's gonna be rec and trails, yeah.
Pop it in the community programming.
Well, it'd be under maintenance probably, yeah.
Yeah, maintenance.
They don't spend any money on maintenance anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was zero. Maintenance.
I think we already put one of the porta potties in there?
So.
No?
No, we kept it in the downtown maintenance because that's right over here, it's in the downtown.
It's in the downtown.
Yeah.
So could we, could we move downtown maintenance, could we just, should we, could we keep this to a thousand dollars? So that budget's not changing because they haven't spent it. And then worst case scenario, they still have to make a hundred in capital if they need to pull from something, right, recreation desk? So they have their own.
Well, it has to be a capital expense. They can't pull it into their regular, yeah.
But they have some flexibility and they've generally been underspending. So then we would be taking a thousand out of the downtown maintenance? Is that what the town?
Why are you doing that?
Because it's coming out of rec now, a thousand dollars? Or at least the porta potties and the trash?
I don't think the, I don't think the amount exists in the budget right now, so we have to make it happen. We can't take it, move it.
Right.
Oh. Right, there's been a lot of discussion about having like a company come twice a week and pick up the trash on Main Street instead of having the road crew do it and also doing the trailheads at the same time. And so that's the expense that probably would be over all three of them, like five grand a year realistically. So, so where, do, do we wanna just see what this first year plays out or do we wanna add money there? That's what I'm asking.
So where's the trash pickup here at the memorial building? It's in the town office budget?
Uh, it's in memorial building operating, yep.
Right.
For this building.
I'm just saying, cause inevitably it would be the same contractor that we have pick up the trash here.
More than likely, yes.
Um, and we have an idea of what that costs, so, um, I don't know, I'm just trying to, you know. It shouldn't be this hard.
Yeah.
To just figure out how it gets paid for.
I think we should put in maintenance on the recreation budget.
Mm-hmm.
For trash removal.
For trash.
And that's trailheads and downtown.
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah, downtown under rec?
Does it, wait, does it need to be all, wait, can, can we have it be pulled from two different places?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure. Sure you could, but then, I, I'm just saying for like, when bills are being paid, it's like, oh, this, this trash removal needs to come from here
It's pulling it, looking at it.
and this trash removal needs to come from here is a little.
Okay. So would it be easier just to change the name of downtown maintenance to?
Contracted trash removal?
To trash removal or what else is in the downtown maintenance that's?
That's, it used to be beauty, so it was the flowers and stuff, but we said the, the partnership is probably gonna take care of the flowers now and the lawn and such.
The porta potties.
Beauty, okay. Okay, how about, how about trailhead trash removal?
Well, and downtown?
Well, because.
Trailhead and downtown trash removal.
Why can't I just say downtown maintenance slash trash?
Yep, there you go. Nailed it. Good job.
Like. And then you probably should add some money to that.
But do we want that in this budget?
Yep.
Yes, but do we want?
Off the rate up to five thousand.
But hang on, but do we want it in the highway budget? Sheri keeps saying she wants it in the rec.
I don't know.
It doesn't matter where it is.
It doesn't. That's true.
As long as we know where to expense it.
But there's a thousand bucks in the rec budget that they haven't been spending.
Right.
Well, let's remove it.
So then we sold, so.
Add it up. Here we go, okay.
Okay, so we take, we take it or we reduce it to two hundred and fifty dollars.
Right.
No, we take it zero.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
Wait, wait, I wanna hear what you were gonna say.
I was gonna say because it, for a while, they were doing, um, cause skating rink is why we had a little bit in there. If they get the skating rink going, that's where that was spent. So that's why I said doing two hundred and fifty dollars for.
Yeah, but they could also pull that for community programs, doesn't have to be separate maintenance line. So if they, so if they end up setting up the rink, there's no reason why they couldn't hire somebody through the community programs line to do that, right? Doesn't have to be a maintenance line, right?
Yeah, so take it out of there and then we'll add fifteen hundred dollars more to.
And they were below budget on the community anyway, so it's fine. And they are below budget on the community anyway, so it's fine.
To this downtown maintenance and trash that will, I mean, I'm not sure if another fifteen hundred dollars will be enough if we're doing, if we're talking the trail, well, it'll be only one trailhead this, this calendar fiscal year. And the downtown trash.
And then one port body.
Right.
So it'd be about right.
Yeah.
All right, so it's true, let's do, so take a thousand away from recreation, increase this for downtown maintenance and trash removal.
Yep. Yep.
And.
Done.
We'll look into starting that July first to have that company, have a company come and take it away. So where do we, nine point nine five, so we're, we're talking to like five hundred dollar difference.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Can we, okay. What else do people have?
Nothing.
That's it.
I want to have a skater next year.
I would like to do that too.
Yep, but we're not gonna go with town money.
That would help.
Volunteer.
That would help.
It's okay, where would it be, Jackensfield? The lawn of the townhouse? The downtown partnership for help with this.
What, is there something specific?
Yeah.
We, I did sit with Diane and Japhne.
Do an interbreath.
And made it as lean as we could with the staff increases that they desired and it was at.
Right.
It was at seventeen percent and we brought down another five. It's nineteen thousand dollar increase, yes, their budget is like barely four percent of the entire town's budget. So.
And there was some discussion about whether or not, are they gonna add some information to the annual report to talk about what the friends role is?
I already got it, I have a lovely narrative from Joey, it's already in there.
I think that'll help a lot.
Yep, I already got that.
That'll help a lot.
Isn't it amazing how people can get things in on time? I'm in awe.
So, yeah, I, after the last meeting, I emailed her and she obviously said.
That's great.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's true.
Thank you.
What's your pleasure?
I would entertain a motion to approve the budget of four million, four hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars to be presented to the voters at town meeting.
Salute.
Seconded.
Any more discussion on budget?
The only thing I would just say for anybody watching is that we start, I think, we do this every year, but we've done really amazing work, mostly Casey and town office, to win all this town to something. I mean, we started at almost fifteen percent. It was a lot, and so I think like, as to what Tim said earlier, we need to make some choices to move the town forward and that includes some really important positions. So we're gonna have to sell it a little bit at town meeting, but I think this is, we've done a lot of work to make this.
And I will make sure that you have the data about the salary and benefit cost for each of the two new positions, because somebody's gonna, obviously, you're gonna ask, they're gonna work it out.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And they're gonna wanna know what it looks like without them, so yes.
Right. Great, so any more discussion? All in favor of approving this budget to present to the voters in March, please say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you, Casey, select board reports.
I just have my plea for help for people, anybody who would be interested in being that solid waste district rep. I'm gonna not do that going forward in March.
And if we don't have somebody who shows up to those meetings, we don't have a voice at the table, we don't know what's going on, we don't have a community for our.
A lot's going on, a lot is going on in the solid waste district.
And thanks to you, and like, we've gotten a lot of help.
And we benefit, when we, when I participate, we benefit from the information that's shared and also just in a variety of ways. So hopefully, somebody out there's gonna ask me about it and want to volunteer in that way, it's a very small lift. And also.
It's Wednesday evenings, is that correct?
Wednes, first Wednesday of the month is the board meeting.
What time?
Six thirty.
What do you do at the board?
The, and then also Wiz had, I talked to Wiz and she offered Casey to help, I'm not sure who's writing those, the dedication part and the other.
Wiz will help.
We're gonna cover.
Wiz was happy to help with that if, if she's needed.
Yeah, okay, we're gonna cover.
We gotta cover, yeah, find somebody, yeah, and tell them, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah. Great.
So, I mean, well, we're jacked with it, there's some.
I mean, she'd be happy to.
Historical.
Yeah.
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 Great, spice it up.
Have you put anything on front of the form about the solid waste management, do you want us to do that, or?
I haven't yet. I haven't done it, I haven't done it because we appointed at that first organizational meeting after town meeting, so I figured I'd wait.
Okay.
A little bit longer, but I did send the email out to everybody I could think of who might know somebody who'd be interested in doing that.
Well, let us know if you need something from our office.
Any other select board reports? New business?
I just have a quick new business, it's more of a future agenda item or discussion topic, because we've finished our budget, you know, we focus on the budget this time here, then we have a little bit of a lull. Not a lull, there's still plenty of business to talk about, but I feel like from here to town meeting, we have an opportunity to have some deeper conversations about things. And I've been thinking a lot about all the buyouts, the fire in East Harwick, the crush for housing in Harwick and East Harwick and how we have, with those buyouts, there are basically fifteen homes that no longer exist in Harwick. And it's really hard for people to find housing, affordable housing, some of that's not in our purview. But I think, I think that we've talked about it before, we've had developers come to us, we've had conversations here and there about it. I know we have a lot of other really important projects, but I think at some point, it would be really nice if the select board in the town talked about, are there ways that we could, are there ways that we could think about housing? We have, Kristen's done so much work in terms of flood recovery, which is fantastic, identifying how to help Granite Street area and save those houses rather than having them be buyout properties. But at some point, I think it would be really great to have a conversation, maybe as part of a retreat, doesn't necessarily have to be part of a regular meeting. It was just something I've been thinking a lot about, how are we keeping people here, how are we attracting people here, how are we making the community a place where people can actually physically, I think it's getting harder and harder.
Great. Other new business or old business? Adjourned, thank you.